We'll call it planning board order. Five fifty-nine. All right. Welcome, everyone. Would somebody like to read the?
I'll do that. Pursuant to chapter two of the X of two thousand and twenty-three, this meeting will be conducted in person and as a courtesy of the remote means. According to that article law. Please note that while an option for a noted and in sand or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public and toward my house. This meeting hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless required by law. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting, they do so by using the zoom login provided. And viewers can also watch at HTTPS, the local scene. Dot media backslash duck spray for information about duck spray programming, including streaming and watching replays on duck spray YouTube.
Thank you. All right, so we just jump in, we've got two administrative items, so guys. Oh, yeah, sorry, number one is open for, we have open, anybody open for? Now we'll go to number two. Administrative items, we have two Z B A case, two thousand and twenty-four dash zero seven, special permit, twenty-one Ocean Road South. Anybody have any comments? On this?
Yeah, they weren't touching the setbacks, so that's.
Since you don't have a planner to write anything, and well, you don't, we don't have a plan, or we've been gotten used to that with Paul. Can you share any comments? So. I'm not qualified to do, oh, okay, I mean, so, I mean, yes. Yeah, yes. Are you here to discuss?
Jeff, turn it again, this is my mother.
Hey, how are you?
So, yeah, so. As comments, like you want me to present, like what we're looking to do?
I think we know what you're gonna do, you, we were just reviewing the application.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I put together a couple of just about a minute and a half worth of some words, just to explain like the ten thousand foot view of what we're looking to do and. What the process, you know, how the process has been so far and where we are with it, with respect to conservation, historical, you know, where we are in that aspect. So I don't know if you guys wanted to hear that in honor.
I'd certainly like to hear it.
Sure, yeah, here, we'd love to hear it, yeah.
So. Probably take me about a minute and a half to read this. So. My mother's eighty-two years old, she'd like to make this a full-time residence down in Duxbury. We're in the process of selling a large family home in Branch Tree, this is just too big for her right now. This move would put her in an area where my brothers and I could get to her quickly if she needed us. With the appraisals and the plot plans, structural plans, attorney's fees and application fees. We're into this process in the area of about ten thousand dollars so far, and I don't mention this, that number for sympathy, but rather to oppress to the board. Our level of commitment to the project and obviously our mom. Our proposal is to remove the existing roof and construct a five hundred and sixty-six square foot second story addition. And second floor, one hundred and three square foot screened in porch, all within the existing footprint and as proposed by the submitted plans. We seek the variance because we are existing non-conforming. With a finished basement and poured concrete foundation. We have complied with all the FEMA fifty-fifty directives and to fill in the basement and raise the house, put it on pilings, or just tear it. I was down, start over, doesn't make any sense financially or otherwise. As a co-owner of trade when developing the Bay Point properties, I personally overseen the construction of about nine separate. Four-bed, three-bath, single-family homes in the town of Bradstreet. Where I worked closely with the building department and other associated departments during the development of these properties. I had the opportunity to work within vet contractors of all disciplines. After roughly three projects, I had identified and had the pleasure to work with a group of guys that I could count on and have since become close friends with. These men are licensed contractors that I trust on pricing and constructing my mom's dream. And with their help, we have met all the criteria so far for this project. We've discussed the project with our contiguous neighbors and most of our surrounding non-contiguous neighbors. They're all on board, they're all in favor of the project, and we will have written and or attachments of those letters in support. For our nine twenty-six D B A meeting. Historical has already signed off on it. Conservation had a big found a negative impact, so they have signed off. As we're not going to be affecting or disturbing any of the resource area. Lauren, H E asked me to check with Marshall wastewater treatment facility regarding increased flow, because we are gonna put another bathroom up there. I spoke with Bob Guthrie over there, who advised that the addition. The additional bathroom wouldn't pose a problem and that if a permit came across it, his desk, he would certainly sign it. So in closing, I would just respectfully submit this testimony and all submitted documents for the committee's review. In request that you guys make a positive recommendation for our consideration on nine twenty-six. Thank you.
Any questions? No, good, thank you.
The only, I mean, this is a slim planning board and accordingly, you know, you met all the rules, so this is not an official, I'm not throwing a brick back at you. I was just curious, because the house was constructed in nineteen thirty-five, it's a single-story structure. You've been able to verify that the framing is gonna be okay with stacking another story?
Yeah, there's, the structural accounts are all done, I mean, since then, obviously, seventy-eight, ninety-one. So, and that's why historical signed off on it, because I think there was like two nails left that were actually from the original building. They wanted those painted white, so we're gonna go and do that, no. No, there's very little left of the original structure. So, yeah, all the structural counts have been done and it'll certainly support.
The addition.
Any other questions? Comments? All right, do we have a motion?
That we.
That we, we have a motion to. To vote on this, to whether to recommend or defer. I guess defer. What would you be having recommend, if we had a wish to recommend or recommend?
Yeah, well, I'd like to move that the planning board recommend the C B A approval of the application based on. The lack of an increase in.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? That is a while, I can remember. Any discussion, okay, let's call for roll call vote, all those in favor of voting on this motion?
Matthew Ray, aye. Governor, aye.
We actually need to vote, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we're all here, or there's six of us here, all those in favor say aye. 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 I give a post.
Upstate.
Okay, thanks. So we have five, five days, one section. Voting in favor to the for this to the, you name of the recommendation to pass it.
Just so you understand this, I, I'm also a member of the zoning board and I have stayed from ruling on these until they come to the zone.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
All right, do we have, and next up is the minutes of August twenty-six, do we have? There were, I have a couple of catch-up. That's right. All right, so that's it for administrative items, next up is discussion with Jeannie Horn regarding the planning director and assistant planning and director slash environmental physician. You can come, you can come closer, if you need your desk.
Very far away, yeah. Um.
You're welcome to move it.
All right. Move it to. Yeah, that would be better, otherwise you'll, you'll think I'm shouting at you. All right. So I come with good news.
Oh, we like that.
Yes.
Planning director?
We did.
What?
Um, yeah, so we have an interim planning director that we just hired. The offer was accepted this afternoon.
Wonderful.
So we're issuing a written offer letter in the morning, so we're thrilled. So, you know, once the written offer is accepted and the, and the onboarding is complete, you know, I would feel more comfortable telling you who the candidate is. But very well experienced planner. And, you know, we're thrilled to have this particular candidate, we had. I believe your chairman participated in the interviews and so great candidate and. They, we, we expected this candidate will be able to start as early as Tuesday next week.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah.
And you mentioned interim, so what is the timeframe?
So it's interim, there isn't a timeframe on it, so there are two positions that are open. We have our, you know, regular planning board, planning director position and an interim role. So this individual applied for the interim role because they have another, they have. Employment elsewhere that is cyclical, so this person has capacity. That's much greater from now until January.
Okay.
And then in January, the capacity changes a little bit.
Okay.
But it wouldn't be unreasonable to think that they could do both jobs. The other job is less than full-time. So, and it's like, it's like a, a private business that has nothing.
Meaning a cyclical position that this person holds.
Yes, that are.
Elsewhere, yeah.
Okay.
The other position, they have capacity.
Okay.
That's greatest between now and January typically in any given year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
Yeah, so that's good. And then I see on the agenda, you wanted me to talk about the planning director role and the assistant planning director slash environmental positions. So there is a significant skills gap nationwide in terms of planners, so it's simply a supply and demand issue. So they're in demand. There aren't enough planners to go around and. So it's hard to attract and retain planners at, you know. The pay that we can provide, but everyone's having the same problem. So it's widespread, there are certain positions that are, that are experiencing that, this position in particular is, is one for Duxbury and the role's been empty. Well, I shouldn't say it's been empty, because we did have Paul Hockyotus, we were lucky to get him too. So, and, and Chris Ryan was great about continuing to work with us, so we're going to do the same thing with Paul, we'll ask Paul to help. Acclimate this new person and they'll be on like a Zoom call and we'll have this person focus specifically on what Paul was, we're prioritizing the work. Especially going into special time meeting. On work that's going to be important for that time meeting. So we are also in the middle of a classification and compensation study. We received preliminary results today, so I'll be reviewing those results. And those results include the planning director role and an assistant planning director role with a focus on environmental. So the, and we, I worked very closely, the H R department worked very closely with Paul on those job descriptions and job analysis questionnaires. So the process is the job analysis questionnaire is used to classify the position internally in comparison to all of our other. Positions throughout town, so it includes all six labor organizations and our personnel policies, management and non-management roles. So the internal analysis and external analysis is available, so the management team will take a look at that this week. So that the external analysis, so once we classify the positions, we know where they're going to get grouped by grade potentially. And then there are, we use external factors to determine what the pay range should be. So this year we've expanded. The comparable jobs. Last time it was ninety jobs that we used that were comparable, most frequently occurred in other communities, this time we're using a hundred jobs. Last time, in two thousand and twenty, we had sixteen comparable communities, this time we have eighteen comparable communities and they're more contiguous. So they're more meaningful to Duxbury and they're more apt to be the communities that we are competing for talent with. So that means that like a Plymouth is in our competitive set community and they're much larger than we are, but. That's the reality is that we're competing for the same talent, so that makes it much more challenging when you're comparing yourself against a Plymouth that has. A greater ability to pay because of that commercial tax base. So a little bit of a difference there and we're more experienced with the overall process. And our partnership with Gov H R and we're more familiar with, you know, what worked and what didn't work with the last study. And for the last study, we were in the middle of the pandemic, we came out of the pandemic into. An overall talent gap in a totally different economy and now, you know, the economy is changing a little bit, things are normalizing a little bit. It's no longer the great resignation. People are, you know. The playing field is different now than it was three years ago.
Jeannie, how many grades, pay ranges do we have in a professional?
Um, throughout, so overall, we have, so in the personnel policies, we have grades one through fifteen. And then with our six labor organizations. We do what most towns don't do, we integrate all of those positions into our overall of grades one through fifteen. So the last time we did the study, we had, we started off with thirteen grades and we ended up with fifteen.
And I, since this, the planning position is publicly posted, can you share with us what the grade level is for that?
What it is currently?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, the grade, the position for planning director currently is a grade twelve. And I believe.
Out of fifteen or sixteen?
Out of fifteen. Yeah.
You were gonna say something.
Um, so we're still determining where that's going to end up, chances are it'll be higher than that with the new study, given. The facts that we're facing right now.
Right.
You know, our, our challenges. So chances are it will be a higher grade with the new study.
All right.
And all of that is subject to. Approval by time meeting, so the classification and compensation study will be presented to the select board. And they'll review it, they don't vote on it. Then those, the labor organizations.
Or anti-chappy.
Those results will become part of our successor contract negotiation, so all of those results have to be collectively bargained with each labor organization. And the personnel policies, compensation study results will become part of Article Four. So that will all go through the regular time meeting process to include the finance committee that will make a recommendation to the select board.
And any of those meetings, or any changes ever given to like a particular role, give of, oh, my gosh, that really, why is that an innate, it should be a. Well, I just, is there any negotiation or room or movements, I guess these conversations continue?
With the non-union or the union?
Non-union.
With the non-union, sure. But that apple has kind of been polished. You know, so there is, once the preliminary results are finalized, those will be presented. And then individuals will have an opportunity to appeal their grade placement and, and we actually created that process the last time, none. Other communities don't do that. So not every appeal was adopted.
Okay.
But the management team looks at the appeal, considers it, considers the placement. And that's why it's such a thorough process, each employee has a, has an equal opportunity to participate in the process. So each employee was. Given a copy of their job description and the job analysis questionnaire, the job analysis questionnaire is, is completed by the employee. And the employee returns a completed job analysis questionnaire and an edited job description and those go to the. Department head and supervisor, so they are fully examined by the department head and supervisor, then they're fully examined by the H R department. To see if we're all in agreement and we were not, there's like a comment section, so nothing that the employee submits gets changed, but that is an opportunity to comment on that. So then all of that gets pushed over to Gov H R, so there, I think there are about a hundred and forty-four positions that we're doing this with, so it's a ton of work. Done in a really short period of time.
Yeah.
In order to get these results in time for annual town meeting and the collective bargaining process, because all of our labor unions. Contracts expire on September.
I know, it's a lot of work, so thank you.
We love it.
We're hoping that the funding position is elevated because that's, that's the feedback we've been hearing very consistently.
Yeah. And I think, you know, it's easy to make that assumption, but it's nice to have the facts to back it up.
Absolutely.
Right. So what we benchmarked is not necessarily where we could get it, we, the collective data that details. People's individual salary in each community, but really we're looking for the ranges because it's a compensation system, so we're not trying to match. Pay per se, because there's all kinds of factors that go into it, but we're trying to make sure that everybody's within the range that they should be from an internal and external perspective.
If you have any questions about them.
Great news, thank you. You're welcome.
Just the job descriptions and kind of what the vision here is for the planning department as far as like the director or the assistant director.
So I think the order of operations is really important here, so we need to fully understand. So I feel like both job descriptions are well-vetted. They are based on, you know, some of the work that this committee has done or board has done and then we worked on those job descriptions with Paul Hockyotus. And the town manager as well and then, so those job descriptions were provided to Gov H R. And. It's difficult to find a candidate who's going to complete, you know, check all of the boxes when it comes to a job description. Candidates are gonna be. You know, stronger in some areas and less experienced in other areas, so I think it's important to first build the director role and then. Find, first, the decision has to be made by the finance committee and the. Select board to fund the assistant. Planning director role, so we have a good sense of what that role should be, it's, you know, fully fleshed out job description. But it's important to know what the planning directors' skills are so that we can hire someone once that's fully funded and approved by town meeting. That has skills that are both complementary to the planning directors and consistent with what we're looking for in that role. So what we tried to, so what we did with the assistant planning director role is, we called it a assistant planning director and environmental planner. And obviously that's at a different proposed grade and it focuses on the, the climate and coastal pieces of that. So. And then it overlaps, it interlinks with the planning director role as well. So you just, you never know who you're going to retract until people apply and then you, you take a look at. The skills that are available and our job is to hire the most qualified individuals and sometimes that means we're hiring people who don't have all of the requirements. But they have enough of the requirements so that it makes sense for, for both parties.
That's true, most of the systems.
Right.
Not everybody's gonna have every single box checked, because otherwise they probably wouldn't, they might not wanna do that job.
Right, they might be ready for the next role.
Right.
Exactly, and, you know. I think what we envision for jobs and what actually ends up happening. Sometimes is a little bit different. Yeah.
Gee, good question, if you know, the individual hopefully who will accept the offer.
We do have an accepted offer.
Oh, you have the accepted, yeah, right. Does he or she have experience with some of the coastal issues?
Yes.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah.
Okay, right.
Yeah.
She scares, so coastal issues that towns, like situated like Duxbury and that I find coming across, okay, that's excellent.
Yeah, and this individual has roles, has had roles in municipal government beyond planning director. So they're, they're. They've got great experience.
Great, awesome.
Listen, you might not be able to answer this, that's totally okay. So if they're not, they don't seem interested in the director role per se, but they perhaps, once we have somebody in place, would they potentially be interested in the assistant role or is it too early to say?
I think it's too early to say, because I think a lot of times. I don't, you know, you don't know what people's motivations are, you know, like maybe the motivation is capacity, maybe the motivation is. You know, maybe, maybe they wanna test out Duxbury and see, and see how it is, so this person will be well positioned for the director role. And, and a lot of people at this, you know. Currently are looking for less responsibility, so I think either role would be great for this individual. I think, you know, we might need to be more creative. With these kinds of positions, given the skills gap.
Yes, we'll just get them in and.
Right.
See what they think.
Right.
Well, that's great news, thank you.
You're welcome.
Trying into how you're gonna orchestrate this process, I'm curious if the advertisement posting for the planning director role is going to. Identify that there's gonna be subsequently hired for an assistant, you know, in the.
I can't say that, because I don't know.
Yeah.
Exactly.
That's one of the barriers, it's a huge job, you know.
Well, it happens, right?
Like if you have the, the, the experience of working with the staff.
Right.
And then you have a town asking you to do the whole job.
Right.
You know, without the back bench.
I think it varies widely, if you look at a planning director role in Plymouth. Compared to Duxbury, those are two very different roles, so in Plymouth, there's a lot more work, there's a lot more projects, there's a lot more staff. So I think, you know, there are benefits and drawbacks to both, like a well-experienced planner would look at Duxbury. Given the staff and the amount of projects as, yeah, it's the whole job, but it might not be. Right, it might not, it's not the same job, I think the challenges of planning director role in each community varies widely. Given the body of work. Yeah. And, you know, their, their level of expertise.
Yeah. So Ty, were you kind of going to, is it in the job description that they might have another, somebody that they would?
Well, I was just thinking in terms of, when we cast the net, you know, if you, the attention goes.
Right.
Where somebody is missing out on.
Right.
Is there a way to add, is there something included in the current job description that there's a, there's a plan potentially to have an assistant as well?
I am always concerned about doing that, because we could be promising something that doesn't happen. Yeah, so I, we always have the ability to repost the job. So if anything changes, I would prefer to repost it.
Okay.
But I think. I just have learned through experience that what I think is going to happen and what ends up happening is not always the same thing.
I was just thinking along the lines, if you're applying, thinking I've gotta be a department of one, or I'm gonna have a. Somebody on my team that's kind of a different, bigger, different expectation, I didn't know if kind of to your point, like somebody might feel like speak job, but maybe they know, but I understand your point from an H R point.
Yeah.
We don't know.
Right.
So.
Right. Exactly. And I don't know how qualified Emily is either, like, you know, she's, she's been in the role for a long time, she's got a lot to add to the. Individual getting acclimated and, you know, that, that makes a big difference, that's not something I have in the job description, but that's something that, you know, we can't.
So I question with the timeline, given that we know the, if the prospective interim planner. Takes job and their level of effort increases to January, we're not gonna redo this planning position until town meeting March, so really not gonna hire in earnest till April.
We still have the, the director role posted, so we've had both roles posted together, so we're gonna take down the interim role. Because there isn't a deadline on this role, so it's, you know, because it is an interim role, we have more flexibility, so we can. Increase and decrease the hours. As necessary.
And didn't Paul Hockyotus say that his, you know, his retirement hours triggered his departure, so that changes come January, so that might be an option.
That's right, he did say that, so the challenge there is that. It equates to about thirteen work weeks for him, that's thirty-two hours a week. So no matter what, every, and, and I think it'll, it may go up a little bit more. Because by next year, he'll be eligible for the. The. Basically, the calculus will change a little bit for him because of pension requirements and it'll, it'll be more favorable, so he may be more available. So, yeah, so we. So, yeah, so we, we figured this is a great. Next step, because it would be helpful, like you said, Paul may have some availability come January. And if this person wants to kind of stay in on the interim role until we hire someone else, or, you know. We have coverage, exactly. Right, we have someone to carry the ball.
Anybody have any other questions for Jim?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your patience.
Yeah, thank you so much for working on this, Jim.
Oh, you're welcome. I'm sorry it takes so long. It's a, it's a tough presentation to film.
My daughter's in graduate school to be a planner.
Oh, is she?
Yeah, and people are literally beating on, beating down the door. Where she's going to school to try to get people hired.
Wow, is she local? Is it a local?
No, she's at the University of Texas.
Yeah, and so to your point, we do post at area colleges that offer this as part of their curriculum. So we're, we're knocking on all the doors. There's just nobody home. Yeah, yeah, that's, thank you for adding that. It is, it's a great career path. And I'm glad that she is pursuing that.
Okay, thank you. Except, but anybody who's on reports. Anybody have anything they want to share? Is anything going on over at Paul's Corner?
Yeah, we've had a couple of meetings. The meetings have been productive in the sense that. There's a desire to really focus on seeing if we could do. A better traffic. Better for better way for pedestrian. Crossings. There was a sense that we. Bought not aim as high as some of the previous planning efforts. Given some of the issues that surround that area. And we would, I, I think there's a real effort to get something done that actually helps. In the traffic circle. And whether anything beyond that happens is going to be hard to predict.
That will probably help, though, maybe get the ball rolling for anything else.
Well, it, at some point, we've just gotta make that a more. A, a, a more pedestrian friendly place.
Car friendly too.
Surprisingly few accidents. Largely because people who go there know what they're doing, although if you go through there with, in an Uber. You never know what.
Or if you're not from there, that's when you see people.
Like Chevy chases European baking.
The one I see all the time is, is straight across from Depot on the stairs. So they don't even go around.
On the left side or the right side of the pole?
Left.
Well, Jen, how's your committee doing?
Uh, we have had a couple cancellations over the summer, just availability and quarantine issues, so we are meeting toward the end of the month.
Yeah, I may be seeing, yeah, uh, there was a meeting over the summer, in-person meeting that I went to. Is the sidewalk committee something that I can join?
I'm on that one. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And Emily knows we've been busy with the bike and sidewalk committee and finalizing, well. Not only, but we just finalized, has it been submitted yet? The complete, complete roads or complete streets application? October first. Yeah, so the committee's hopeful. They didn't get the grant last year, but they're hopeful that this year they'll get the grant, and that will be used towards the first half of. The Washington Street Sidewalk Project, which was approved at, you know, prior to town meeting.
Right, so is that from the flagpole to where?
The name of the side street has escaped me. It's a private way right after Water Street. Do you remember the name of the road or must you inside the?
There's three different segments.
No, this is the first, this is the first segment. That's the, that's the, the total, yeah, the, the potential grant.
I thought this one was going to actually include more than just one or two segments. I think there's three. I, I think, I thought this was great.
Yeah, in terms of the, I've only been in the meetings twice, so I don't know what happened in the prior, last year, the prior application was not approved, but they're. They're hopeful, well, committee is hopeful that it'll approve this year. The one wild card, obviously, being the MBTA zoning act. If that doesn't get approved, the question has come up in the committee. If the town doesn't approve that, what effect will that have on a grant approval? But we don't, we don't know the answer to that, to show you.
Right, and does, I'm. Guessing that that funding would be important to this committee, and so they might be in support of the MBTA or not.
Well, the Bike Path Committee really hasn't. Yeah, we haven't taken much of a position or talked about that in any way. We just said that we weren't sure that. If the MBTA zoning act is not approved at town meeting. Will that ultimately have a, i- i- maybe it won't, but we don't know. Th- that's one question mark that's out there. What effect, if any, that would have on the. The town's ability to get the grant of the complete streets application. We're hopeful that it doesn't have a negative effect. And the committee's excited for a win and move forward and get part of the sidewalk done.
I run down there all the time.
Lauren, I think, but you can still join as a private citizen.
I'll talk, Elaine Philbrick is the chair of it. Yeah, yeah, okay. Our next meeting's October first.
No big update on the customers' own seat task force. Um, we. We were actually presenting to, we are supposed to present to the select board like every quarter, so we're going at the end of September to talk to them. Biggest thing, I guess one of the biggest pushes is for a planner to help with everything, of course. And then it's just moving, moving, kind of move that ball down the road. It's hard without a planner. It's hard, I think. The, the select board actually added some climate and coastal resiliency goals to into the town manager's list of goals. So we've been able to work with him. He's actually come to some of the meetings and we've been working with him. A little bit more about, like, what else can we do? That's, that continues to move forward. We are looking for two additional members, so if you know, if you're interested, or if you know of anybody else. And we're expanding from three to five, and as it turns out, our chair, David. Gosh, Sam's gonna save me right now, because I'm talking about. Yes, this is, he's the engineer. David Amory has been fabulous. He just continues to push the, keep moving. We're gonna go for the sports analogy tonight, everything. He continues to keep moving the ball down the street, move that ball down the field. He has, he has invited different groups to come in and talk with us. We talked a little bit about what they're seeing, like we had the showfish advisory room come in. We had water, we packed into W, and we've had different groups come in, we've kind of talked about synergies there. Uh, but he is going to be moving out of town, so going to, until you hear Sam, and he has been really quite amazing, so. You know, if anybody, if you're discussing or wanting to put in the horse.
Bag, anything going on?
Anything going on. Well, so the, unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend the last meeting, but they do have their, you know. Priority list projects, they're still working on the East Street RFP, checking their plan for B issue. A little bit more loose requirements to try and solicit and. And so the MBTA communities, obviously, we had the first community meeting here in this room. On Thursday last week and it was very intense. I don't know if anybody's heard anything about it, but the volume of it was quite high. There were a hundred and ten people in this room. Forty-nine, so the doors open. Yeah, a lot of comments, a lot of energy, a lot of consternation. The Autumn Ave residents. They're kind of, I think the average tension is at a peak right now, because they just got this letter saying this is coming at you. Have all kinds of questions. Quality of our table, our system, and so.
We got a really thoughtful letter from folks at Autumn Ave today. That was. There were, Emily passed around the thought was a le- letter that asked all those kind of questions.
Yes, we have that in spades. So as a result of the meeting, we collected, you know, a stack of resident questions. Stan Tech has now, and they're compiling those so that we can provide answers. Unfortunately, you know, the, the toughest part is education, because, you know, we're talking about zoning change. And people are treating it as if it's an imminent development project. They want to know what the perk test results are, they want to know. Everything, all the details, and we can try to say, there is no project. It's not a project. That's what they have in their minds.
Can I ask something? I was at one of that meetings, and I don't understand how you can make all these plans without at least knowing the background and what we're gonna. The perk test, the water supply, all that, that will definitely affect us. And also, if we're gonna. Take care of these problems, it's gonna affect all of Duxbury. I think it will outweigh, some of the costs will outweigh. The grants that the Massachusetts is going to give us, but that's, again, we don't know that yet, but I feel like we're doing this backwards. I'm afraid that if the developer gets an okay with the unit, fifteen units per acre, that's crazy. Sorry, in Massachusetts, what the woman just said now, each town is different. And to do a, do a, a law like that, I think we should be challenging that law. Because it doesn't work for us so much. And to see. I don't know, I've been looking at a lot of houses in Marshfield or developments, and to put something like that. Into Duxbury just doesn't work. I think we should have to be more creative. I don't know, I'm not smart enough to figure that out, but what, what they're planning now, and I feel like. I don't know, they show you this picture here, and I don't know how truthful even that picture is gonna be. And then the other two things I just wanted to say is, um, we had brown water. April, round there, May, April. And so we called up and said, what the heck, you know, it's starting to make your coffee in the morning, and you say this doesn't look right. And they said, oh, nothing's being flushed. I guess when they, they flush them, it turns brown. So then, the next day or two days later, we say we have the same problem, and the woman. Who was very rude to us said, call a plumber. Well, it wasn't just me calling, it was several of our neighbors that all had brown water, so a plumber isn't gonna fix my brown water. I'm, the reason why I bring this up is I'm just nervous that with something going on, where you're doing testing, and you can't at least tell us that. Yeah, we're testing for this development. They never gave us an answer why we had brown water for all of our neighbors over a period of time. You know, so you gotta wake up in the morning and make sure your water is fine before you start making your coffee. And they just told us to run your water from the, you know, from the top floor. And then, then we'll be taking care of, which it did drain after you did it for, you know, until the late afternoon. So things like that, I just want to make sure that we're doing this the right way and not backwards. I just feel like once you pass a zoning thing. The developer is gonna run with it. Really, the developer doesn't care about Duxbury. He cares about his money and what he's gonna make.
So thank you so much for coming. Would you mind sharing us your name?
Terry Curling, from Autumn Ave.
Oh, and what's your address there?
Three seven seven, right? So I about it, but, um, yeah. But I'm representing the other neighbors right now. Because we didn't know whether we were really on an agenda. I gave you a letter, so I thought you might address it today. And I guess we have to learn how to do the proper way of getting on an agenda.
I'm sorry, I didn't. Okay, yeah, sorry, some of it, not everybody's seen it, but I wanna, I wanna, I would like to, I hope we can. Provide some confidence in the process for you. So we have a fabulous group of people who are working with volunteers who've offered to work through this. With the MBTA community, that's what that tag is the planning board liaison to that. And one of the things with this whole process is that the state has asked all of the communities to put this in place. They've done that because we have a housing crisis. And so to be candid, I don't know too many people, I, I don't know if I'm speaking, I, I think it's, it's not. Typically the way the state law works. Is that fair to say, second way? That the state doesn't usually tell the towns what to do, is that correct? Generally, generally, the towns make their own rules. We have a home rule, and so the town decides what we want to happen here. And I think this is sort of an extreme case, and so. I think if we can look at the, at the spirit of it, then we can use our minds and come together, come, come up with a creative solution. And so that's what the town has been asked to do, and the select board decided that instead of challenging, I, that they decided that we want to create a solution. That would comply with the law, and so that's what they're working on. And so the beauty of zoning is that it's just like, this is like in an ideal world. This is our plan for this area. And it doesn't mean that anything's gonna happen. There are a lot of different areas in town where you can do different things, and they do or they don't happen. And so I know it's gotta be very, it can feel very disconcerting to, to, to hear that there's going to be this major change. Especially if it's right around the corner from where you live. And I, I guess the thing that I would ask firstly is have faith in the process. And when you talk about developers, the planning board has all sorts of rules and regulations about how things are designed and built and what we accept. And if you, you can look back in our minutes, and you know, there's a, a small development that's going in off of. Help me out, what's the right, is it more by the bridge, with the trees, and how, the, the one with the water?
Yeah, but I mean, it took me an awful time, and that's, that's not the level of review that these things are gonna get. The, the, the state zoning law, the state law directs our town. To amend its zoning bylaw to permit multifamily uses as a right in certain areas. That's what the law directs us to do. Whether any of them can be built, it is, is an open question. All of the questions about. Per testing, about water access, about sewage, all of that stuff. You have to go through every single one of those subsequent hoops to actually building.
Right, right, that's what I was trying to get to.
Right, but every one of those hoops has to be addressed, but this board is gonna look at those projects like. A standard subdivision, because you don't need subdivision. Approval for multifamily housing in, in, in these zoning districts. Because they are as a right. Permitted uses.
But they still have to go through.
They do, they have to get, they have to go through all of the other hoops. And, and the, the notion that you can build as a right within this area. Doesn't mean anything is going to ever get built. There, there's not a single thing that is mandated needs to be built under that law.
Right, our job is just to, if, the select board has asked us to provide guidance on zoning.
That's it. So how would? Somebody like me who doesn't, you know, not knowledgeable about this, how do we find out whether we do or do not pass some of these? Hoops. And.
Be doing those hoops, or it'll be.
It would be the, so. So let's, let's assume that the, the, the pride, that, that. The overlay district gets passed, and you can then build multifamily housing within that. With, without having to go and get special permission from the zoning board. If you put a plan together that complies with the state building code, you just go and get a building permit. But in order to get the building permit, the developer would have to go through all of the other aspects of this. All of the, all the environmental laws would still, would still pertain, all of the. You'd, you'd still have to be able to. You'd have to prove that you had reasonable sewage. You'd have to prove that you, that you had appropriate water access. So all of that would be on the developer, who would then be trying to get this project approved. But the, the mere fact that the zoning law changes does not mean that anything is going to get built.
There's another piece of information I want to just make sure. Because you mentioned fifteen per acre, fifteen units per acre is in the state law. The plan being worked up by the committee at this point designates the Bonjes area at thirteen. And I want to add to that, that we have areas in Duxbury today, which have ten units. For acres, those are freestanding single family homes on like the tiny lots. Those are freestanding single-family homes on like the tiny lots, so thirteen per acre, although it sounds. Completely out of proportion compared to our single-family home on an acre, is not well beyond what we already have in places.
And how many, but you don't have twenty acres worth of that, or two hundred and seventy-five units altogether, so that's a different thing too, so.
Do, and Eileen Creek, I mean, it does exist.
Eileen Creek does, is not in the backyard of all these established sixty, sixty years, people have been living there, fifty years. Um, so that's a difference, that's a different animal, totally, I think. You can't, you can't compare that, that, um, neighborhood to our neighborhood, so, and, um. Well, anyways, I just think we should find a few other neighborhoods, I get the housing, I get the high housing crisis, um. My daughter's looking for a house, she can't find one, you know, so I get it, I get it, but we have to do it responsibly so that. Duxbury stays the same as, you know, the character of Duxbury is not, not gonna look like Quincy or. Even Marshfield has more land than, has the one thirty-nine, we're right on that road, fifty-three, two lanes. When I first moved here, there was, yeah. A lot different, and when I first moved here, I was on a committee too for the bike path, and we just, they always, nobody wanted it in. Going by their yard, so, I mean, I get all of that, but this is, this is massive, and this is really extreme. I feel, not just the little path going by. Okay, so I just wanted to know, I, I'm just trying to figure out, but that, um. That, I don't know, there wasn't a lot of questions answered, but I just worried that you pass the zoning law and developers will make it work.
Well, well, just to be clear, we don't pass the zoning law, the town meeting has to pass the zoning law.
Okay, yeah.
And town meeting means you and everybody else who shows up that lives here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I wish we could vote on it and have a date, because people are busy, you know, you know, to give up a knife. But I don't know how, how many people will show up for it, but maybe if they think it's important, they will. Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Right, any other comments, questions about committees or anything like that? Or anything else anybody wants to add?
I'd like to move to a adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?